Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call attendance.
Counselor Vidal.
Present.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Tijada.
Present.
Counselor Abadana.
Present.
Counselor Robertson. Counselor Pearl Luton. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Ray Cooper. Ten members present, Eric Wong.
Counselor Abadana.
Motion to take out of order the communication from City Manager Tom Ambrosino regarding appointments to various boards.
Okay, that's 17. It's before us, what do you want to do with it, Counselor?
I have that.
Appointments to boards and commissions, dear Counselors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea. I am ready to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Licensing Commission, Ms. Jasmine Valentin, 26 Willard Street, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiration in 2021. For appointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Mr. Michael A. Mason Jr., 167 Kennedy Drive, Mollin, Mass., for a three-year term expiration in 2021. He asked that the Council waive the residency requirement for Mr. Mason. For appointment to the Chelsea Retirement Board pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32 and 24 and B, Ms. Sheryl Watson Fisher, 100 Botson's Way, Apartment 408, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiration in 2021. And for a posthumous appointment as an honorary member of the Chelsea Planning Board, Ms. Courtney Rose Hickson, formerly of Chelsea, for an indefinite term. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. I have attached resumes for all new members.
Counselor Abadana.
It's moved to second.
Okay, moved to second reading. Do you want to speak on it? Oh, no, we're going to move on.
We're waiting for the resolution.
Got it, okay.
And now you want your resolution.
Yeah.
Resolution introduced by Counsel Abadana, all members of the City Council. Whereas Courtney Rose Hickson purchased a home and moved to Chelsea on July 1st, 2015, whereas Courtney immediately immersed herself into Chelsea's social fabric by getting to know her neighbors and fellow Chelsea residents, involving herself with social groups such as Chelsea Yay and nonprofits such as Green Roots. And whereas Courtney possessed a sense of fairness and a passion for social justice causes that drove her to participate in Chelsea civic matters and advocate for quality of life issues. And whereas Courtney was a member of the Massachusetts Bar Association and shared her love for the law with Chelsea youth by volunteering as an instructor at the Chelsea Community Schools Future Lawyers Club, and whereas Courtney was an enthusiastic supporter of local business, and they in return were as enthusiastic in supporting her fundraising efforts benefiting the Andover Metro City Foundation through which she raised in excess of $10,000. And whereas Courtney had been recommended for the Planning Board and had held an unsurprising successful interview with Chelsea Planning Department staff the morning of Wednesday, February 7, 2018, with one of her responses being, "I'm going to vote my conscience on things. I have no issue being a lone vote if I think that what is best for Chelsea." And whereas young Courtney Rose Hickson, age 36, of Chelsea, Mass., was formerly of Ridon, Hampshire, passed away suddenly in an automobile accident that same evening. Whereas it was the intent of the City Manager to appoint Courtney Rose Hickson to the Chelsea Planning Board, therefore let it be resolved in light of Ms. Hickson's display of civic participation, passion for social justice, and volunteerism to the sick of our children, that the Chelsea City Council warm-heartedly and deservedly confirm her posthumously the status of honorary Planning Board member.
Chair recognizes Counselor Abadana.
Thank you, Mrs. President. This is a first for the City Council here. That we are...
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to adopt...
Suspension.
Under suspension, no objections.
As I was saying, this is a first for the City Council. It's the best of my knowledge, maybe Counsel Robinson can correct me if I'm wrong, but the City of Chelsea has never appointed anyone posthumously on any of our boards. And I felt it necessary in this situation because as this is read, all of us have gone out to our community and when we meet people who we would like to get involved or already are involved in one way, shape, or form, we encourage them to maybe get onto one of our many boards and commissions. We say this regularly. Courtney was one of those individuals who I met through socially here in the City of Chelsea, was a member or active participant of, say, Chelia. And while she had just moved here recently, within the last three years, she made an immediate impact. And this is, you know, testimony of that is through the crowd who's here tonight, those friends of hers. And the backstory, I say this backstory so I want the public to know, those that are at home, and to my colleagues who are not aware of this, she had been nominated, encouraged by myself, to be a member of the Planning Board. She had had an interview that Wednesday and was set to be nominated by the City Manager, but tragically we lost her later that evening. And it was, you know, the idea was that she would have gotten on anyway, I'm pretty sure. And if anyone had seen her resume, which is part of the packet, you can see that she was, had the talent, had the background, educational, and the work experience that would have been a great asset to the Planning Board. So the idea being that we pass a resolution to honor her and finish what she started and put her on the Planning Board as an honorary member. And her parents, Ralph and Simi, are here today in the company of her Chelsea friends to, of course, celebrate her life, celebrate the contribution she made to the community here, and in a sense, provide a little bit of comfort that know that while she was here just a short time, she made an impact, an important impact, and that this community was ready to welcome her and make a part of the family and the civic life here. But not to be, but we want to remember her and grace her life with this move. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to thank Courtney's parents for being here with us today and a host of friends. I had a chance to meet her at some of those same places Counsel Abadana spoke of. Remember hearing about it and reading about it was just a sad, sad situation. I was very touched about her passion for the City of Chelsea and her dedication on her such short time of being with us. But, you know, that sad day, that afternoon, I believe through her injuries from, she sustained from a car accident took her life, and I know it was just a horrible, horrible incident. It is my hope that as we confirm this resolution tonight, as an honorary Planning Board member for your daughter, that this bring you comfort and let you know that your daughter did touch folks in the City of Chelsea. And we hope that it will remind you of the love for the City of Chelsea and its residents that she had met here. And not only that, not only the City of Chelsea and the residents, but the passion she had for her short three lives here. So I want to thank my Counselor at Large, Counsel Abadana, for bringing this up. And again, I want to thank all your friends for being here tonight to support this family and hope this make your burden a little lighter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Do you want to assist her?
Take a break, a five-minute recess so that we can take a picture with the family and friends of me presenting the resolution.
You got it. All right, we're back.
We have the public hearing on the CIP FY19, FY23.
Public hearing on the CIP, if anybody wants to get up and speak on behalf of the CIP, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be extremely brief. You have the CIP that was submitted, we talked about this in subcommittee, but I consider this an important document. It contains a myriad of significant capital improvement projects that I'm recommending that the City Council adopt and approve, a total over $11 million for fiscal year 2019. They're funded via different sources, including some portion of free cash, some grant money, and some general obligation bonds, as well as a few smaller projects that are funded in the operating budget, all of which are in fact included in the FY19 budget that you received. I respectfully ask that the Council approve this capital improvement plan. I think these projects are essential for the continued progress and improvement of the City of Chelsea.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. Anyone else for public speaking, public hearing on CIP? Going once, going twice? Before we move on to public speaking, I just want to make an announcement. If the counselors could try to keep their side conversations limited while we are in session, it makes it really hard for other counselors to hear, and it also is being picked up in the back room. Public speaking? Anybody for public speaking? Going once, going twice?
Closed.
We have the approval of the minutes of April 23, 2018.
Chair recognizes Counsel Garcia.
Shouldn't you accept and file under suspension if there are no objections?
Seeing none, so moved.
Communications from the City Manager. First communication, notice of waiver intent pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02. I am writing to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Katie Sawyer, 24 Flint Street, Somerville, Massachusetts, as a part-time instructor for Chelsea Community Schools after grantary waiver from the residency requirement set forth in Administrative Code Part 4, Section 112.01. A copy of Ms. Sawyer's resume is attached as she can see Ms. Sawyer is a teacher in the Chelsea Public School System. In accordance with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on that proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor Garcia.
I need you to go to the file and send it to a second reading.
The next communication, request for appropriation of overlay surplus for revaluation cost. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request that the City Council...
Okay. And motion?
Accept and file the communication.
Okay.
And I guess lay it on the table pending an order. I wasn't going to send this to the Finance Committee unless people have questions. We were not able to have a meeting this evening. This particular communication, I don't have any questions on. I don't know if the other members may. If they do, we'll send it to the Committee on Finance. If not, we'll lay it on the table pending the order.
I believe it's at your leisure, Counselor. Would you like to just lay it on the table?
Well, this is pretty cut and dry. It's transferring money within the Assessing Department in order to fund the reevaluation that is required by state law every five years, and it's not a matter of choice, we have to do it.
Okay.
And this money is coming from an existing account in the Assessing Department, the overlay account, where there are some surplus funds, and they want to use the $100,000 in surplus in that account to pay for this service.
Okay.
And I move to lay it on the table pending an order.
Thank you, Counselor.
Street reconstruction work, dear Counselors, I have received some recent City Council orders regarding reconstruction of streets, specifically Pearl Street and Ellsworth Street. This is probably an opportune time to update you on the list of streets and street segments scheduled for reconstruction in this upcoming construction season, May to November 2018. Attached, you will find an email from the DPW Director, Bert Taverna, dated April 3, 2018, which identifies all of the streets we expect to reconstruct this year. These streets will be addressed through a combination of funding, Chapter 90 and otherwise, from both FY18 and FY19. Other than the exceptions specifically noted by the Director, the reconstruction of a street will include sidewalk work. As you will see, Ellsworth Street is included on this list. However, Pearl Street is not part of this year's efforts. At the request of the City Council, I did review the stretch of Pearl Street from Hutton Street to Congress Ave. I agree the street does require reconstruction. But because we have no further funds available for additional work this season, I will schedule this work on Pearl Street for the 2019 construction season. It will likely include only isolated sidewalk work. Many areas of the concrete sidewalk on that stretch of Pearl Street are in good condition.
Have a motion from anybody?
Counselor Cooper. Motion to accept and file.
Under suspension. Thank you, Counselor Cooper.
The next communication, request for funding.
Madam President, please read. This is the communication from the City Manager requesting $310,000 on my motion is to send it to the Subcommittee on Finance.
Okay.
I know, I have some questions for these various appropriations. It's probably six or eight different items, a total $310,000 in free cash. I'm going to try to schedule that Subcommittee meeting ASAP, next Monday night if possible.
Okay.
I don't know if that's open.
I'm not sure, we'll have to look at it. It's not open?
We've been having a few.
We're going to start at Subcommittee on...
I'll get together with you after the meeting, and we'll decide what night is open, and we'll have it on that night.
All right.
But I move to send this to that Subcommittee.
You got it, Counselor.
Next communication, matching share of Massachusetts Gaming Commission grant. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request that the City Council have a further financial Subcommittee meeting and make a determination regarding the city's participation in the Metro North Regional Employment Board's grant application to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission for workforce development funds. The Massachusetts Gaming Commission will likely render a decision on this grant in the next month. The Metro North R B wishes to know beforehand whether Chelsea will take part. As you may recall, I have proposed that the city join in this grant proposal with other surrounding communities to access funds that would assist Chelsea residents in preparing for jobs in the casino industry. To take part in this grant, the city is required to contribute $50,000. The money is available from free cash. A representative from the Metro North R B is prepared to attend a further finance Subcommittee meeting. Representatives from the neighborhood developers and the Chelsea Collaborative are also prepared to attend to discuss how funds from this year's grant have been expanded on Chelsea residents. Among those three entities, the City Council should be able to secure answers to any questions that they have in order to make an informed decision about joining the second year of this grant.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah, I'd like to actually move this to the Committee on Conference. And when a representative from Metro North was here, he quoted that there was 100, over 1,000 contacts. And when he comes back to meet with the committee, I'd like to see him bring the 1,000 contacts so we can verify that they actually took place.
Counselor Bishop.
This did come up at the Subcommittee on Finance meeting already. It came back out on the floor and it was sent to conference. So this is the second time it's being sent to conference. So I just want to make it clear that it's not going to the Finance Subcommittee because it's already been there. So this will be a regular Committee on Conference.
Okay. All right.
The last communication, I believe, from the City Manager, FY19 budget.
Wait, is the budget, actual budget.
Counselor Bishop.
President, I move to accept and file the communication and refer it to the Budget Subcommittee. Is that where it goes?
Move to the Subcommittee on Conference.
On conference, on conference, yep.
I assume that we get another, a supplement to this, do we? On the list of who works for the city and their salaries? Is that part of the budget? Does anyone know?
It's coming.
Okay. I looked through this quickly and I didn't see it in here.
There's another breakdown coming, I believe.
Okay.
Are you looking for a breakdown of personnel?
I'm sorry?
You're looking for a breakdown of personnel?
Yes.
First, with this salary, work...
Okay.
Should be done by Monday.
Okay.
Friday, that's first.
Okay.
You have any demands outside of...
Okay, thank you.
As the members, I realize I had put in a request that the City Manager try to submit a budget to us that reflects a 0% increase in the tax rate. And my reason for doing that was that the rent payers and mortgage payers of the city are fast being put out of, out of the city, being forced out. And I'd like to talk about affordable housing, but what about the affordability for those that are here now? That was my problem. The City Manager has put a budget before us that shows a $10 million increase in spending, and that's not, hey, it's a lot of money. That's going to reflect, I'm sure, a rather large increase in the tax rate. That is, considering that the other components don't offset that $10 million, and I really don't think that they will. So I'm looking forward to attempting to cut the budget to where it needs to be. And we'll do that during the budget conferences. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop.
I want to remind that many amendments must be in writing.
I just want to remind you that any amendments must be in writing. Any amendments must be in writing.
For everybody, yeah.
For everybody, for the budget.
The next item is communications and petitions to the Council. We have a copy of a communication received from City Parking Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions that were approved at the April 24, 2018 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Counsel. So file the communication. The suspension.
Counselor Robinson will accept and file communication under suspension and pending
We have a copy of a communication received from Counselor Liz Leah Robinson regarding a new ordinance, Chapter 13, Section 156, inclusionary housing. Want me to read it?
Actually, I'd like to waive the reading. I'd like to move this to Committee on Conference. I'd just like to speak briefly on the matter. I know that we've had developers that come into Chelsea, and we put the inclusionary zoning in place, which I thought would help us address some of the needs of the people in our community. But come to find out, when the developers come to town, they want to build affordable housing at 80%. So that when they're doing it at 80%, it more or less eliminates the bulk of our city residents who would like to stay in Chelsea and who don't make $50,000 or $60,000. So I'm looking to tighten up that part of the ordinance. I'll just be briefly in Section C, replacing the existing subparaphrase, and it's entirely with the following. In any development subject to this section, at least 15% of the dwelling units shall be affordable housing units, providing a mix of required AHUs in equal quantities for households with income at or below 30% or AMI for households with the income at below 50% and for households with any income at or below 80%, all adjusted for household side. So I'd send that to Committee on Conference so we can have a conversation around it. And if there is no other conversation.
Counselor Bishop.
I guess I'm looking forward to the conference so that issues can be brought up and discussed at that time. However, I kind of disagree with the Counselor at Large in the fact that $50,000 to $60,000 for a household income is not a tremendous amount of money. I think there are many people in the city, probably the bulk of the city, that their household income is in that area. I don't think we want to attract just low income to the City of Chelsea. If we're trying to turn the city around, do we want just low income? When we already have quite a bit of low income, you know, through the Housing Authority and this one and that one? I just think it's something we need to think about real seriously before we get into forcing that on down the developers' throats. Because let's face facts here. If not one north had to do that, had to have low income, they wouldn't have built that. That's why there's no inclusionary housing on that one north project. And that's what we need to think of. What developers are we going to be attracting here to the City of Chelsea? Thank you.
Next item.
Yep, next item.
The next item, we have a copy of a communication received from City Clerk, Parking Clerk, Jeanette Centron White, regarding elections and polling location.
Chair recognizes Counsel... Actually, it's a communication from...
It's a communication that would need us to speak on it tonight and take actions on it.
Yeah, so we should pull it out, do our unfinished business out of the, out of conference. But we have to, what do you want to do with the communication?
Just accept and file the communication.
Accept and file.
Yes, Counselors, yeah.
We'd like to make a motion to also pull out the two orders regarding the polling machines out of conference.
Okay. It's before us, what would you like to do with it, Counselor Garcia?
I would like a roll call.
That communication that you just accepted file was just a notice to us that she resolved the issue with St. Rose Voting Location. It's going to remain there. That's all she was establishing. That's all she was establishing. The item before you right now is the order introduced by Councilor Vido, order that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 54, 34, the city of Chelsea, City Council approves the discontinuance of the OpTec Eagle 3P E precinct tabulator as a voting machine for use in city and state elections. Want a roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Councilor Lopez. Councilor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Bishop.
Yes.
Councilor Tejada.
Yes.
Councilor Avzanaeta. Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Pearl Latanda. Councilor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilor Ray Coopero. Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion adopted. The next order introduced by Councilor Vido, order that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 54, 34, the city of Chelsea, City Council hereby approves the use of DS 200 precinct scanner and tabulators as voting machines in all primaries, preliminary elections, and elections of the Commonwealth. Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Councilor Lopez, absent. Councilor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Bishop.
Yes.
Councilor Tejada.
Yes.
Councilor Avzanaeta.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Pearl Latanda. Councilor Garcia.
Yes.
And Councilor Ray Coopero. Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion adopted.
Council.
Regarding the motion we just passed for the new voting machines? Is that correct?
We should have done it before, but go ahead.
Okay. It's okay.
No, go ahead, go ahead. If you have, go ahead.
So for some reason, I just thought we just had, we were supposed to have some language in there to state that we were supposed to discontinue our old voting equipment before we vote here.
We did. That was the first order that we voted on.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. And then the second one was a.
And then we approved.
Yeah, and then we approved it, yeah. Thank you, Councilor Brown.
Okay, new business.
New business.
First order under new business, order introduced by Councilor Bishop, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $100,000 from fund balance reserved for overlay surplus account to the Assessing Department Appraisal Service account.
Councilor Bishop.
Madam President, I move to a second reading.
Okay.
I discussed this when it came up on the floor a few minutes ago. And this is the $100,000 needed to do the reevaluation for fiscal year '20, which is done during fiscal year '19.
Yep.
And it's a transfer within the Assessing Department.
Okay.
So I move to a second reading.
Okay.
Next order introduced by Councilor Bishop, order that City Council authorize appropriation funds in the amount of $45,000 from free.
Madam President, on all of these, I, I didn't put, sign them. We sent that to conference. We sent it to the Committee on Finance, goes to all the others appropriations.
Is this part of the communication that we received earlier?
Correct.
So, okay, so, so.
So A to, A to H you want to send to the.
We want it sent to the.
Second readings of Subcommittee on Conference.
A to H.
We'll meet before the next meeting and bring them back out onto the floor again.
One clarification?
Yes, Councilor.
So there are plenty of time for two readings.
If they're not signed, are they legally before us?
Well, no, he sent the communication. But now he's sending each individual order to a Subcommittee on Budget and Finance so we can further discuss before we vote on it appropriately.
These are, actually, read the first time right now. These are first readings.
Right, but my question was, they're not signed, are they legally before us?
No, they're not. They were sent to conference. They're not being sent to a second reading. They're not before us.
You're not? Okay. They're not before you.
They're not before us.
So.
So everything goes to a Subcommittee on Budget and Finance. A to H, correct? Okay. Calvin?
Go ahead. Order introduced by Councilor Robinson, request that a Subcommittee Conference be scheduled with the City Manager and the City Solicitor to discuss city contracts, reconstruction projects being awarded.
First of all, of the council. Okay, Councilor Robinson, you have any words to speak on it?
No.
Okay, anybody else like to speak on it?
Order introduced by Councilor Vido, order that a Subcommittee Conference be held to discuss amending hours, extension of inclusionary zoning ordinance.
First of all, the council. Council recognizes the President.
I move to send it to a Subcommittee on Conference, and I'd like to adopt of the suspension, and I'd like to speak on it.
Subcommittee on Conference, you have the floor, Madam President.
Thank you. So this is, I guess, great minds think alike. This is more, this is in line with what Councilor Robinson is wanting to discuss, and it's the inclusionary zoning that this council passed last year. I believe wholeheartedly that we did it in good faith in an effort to try to make sure that we're looking out for our community. Basically, what inclusionary zoning does is allows for new developments that are coming into the city to allocate a certain percentage at affordable housing rates. The problem is the affordable housing is a broad term. That could mean a certain amount off your rent, or it could mean, it can cater, basically the developers have the discretion to decide who they're, who they're wanting to provide these units for. So the average family in Chelsea, let's say, makes about $20,000. When, when the feds, when had determined what our AMI is for the city, our area median income, we are often, we are bulked in with Boston and cities that have more affluence. And so I will respectfully, respectfully have to agree with, disagree with some of the comments that my, the counselor that spoke before, the, I'm sorry, I'm just not used to talking. I forgot how to do it.
Take your time, Councilor.
So I think that we have a responsibility as representatives of this community to make sure that we are creating policy that is taking, that is considering the, our most vulnerable populations. And while I am fortunate enough to not be on the low income aspect of things, and I own my home and I have a husband, I recognize that some of these people that can, that can benefit from offering apartments at a lower rate could be a city employee that's just a single parent. Again, if we leave it up to the developers who do not live here, who are just coming here to make money, if we leave it to them, they're not going to make decisions that are going to suit our residents appropriately. And so I think that we might, though we did it in good faith, I think we really need to reexamine it and really look at how we can cater it in a way and really mandate possibly to make sure that they are creating apartments that can benefit some of our lower income families. People are being displaced out of this community, people that have lived here for years, people that have their support systems here that work here, whose children have I E Ps in our school. I have worked with so many young people who are homeless right now. And I, it is unbelievable how the intersectionality of all the issues, it's not just that they don't have a place to live, it affects their nutrition, it's affecting their grades, it's affecting their behaviors, there's so much trauma associated with it. So while I understand that we do need to figure out how to be creative with the changing times and supporting some of our homeowners, we also need to really be mindful of the renters of this community that fuel our local economy and making sure that we're creating apartments that are affordable for them. So I'm hoping that when we have this Subcommittee, we could talk about this intentionally and deliberately and making sure that we're creating.
One minute, Councilor.
No, I'm done. We're creating, we're creating a path to, for people to just stay in their homes and to live in our city, so thank you.
Okay, any other speakers on the matter? No speakers, okay, we'll send it to the Subcommittee, we set it up.
Next order introduced by Councilor Vido, order that the City Manager provide attendance records from members of existing boards and commissions to the City Council for the past year.
What's your motion? Recognize the President.
I move to adopt under suspension if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, you got the floor.
Thank you. I've received complaints from some residents about some board members not showing up to some of the meetings. And so basically, I'm asking the City Manager to give us attendance records for the board members in case, we are responsible for appointing people onto these boards, and I just want to make sure that we're appointing people that are showing up. Now, I know that some people have said that I can be kind of tough on, on the boards, and, and, and yeah, that's true, but I just want to be clear that I've also asked our City Council Administrative Assistant to create attendance records for us. Because I think if we're going to hold board members to that standard, we need to be accountable to ourselves in doing the same. I'm not looking to publish this anywhere, I under, anywhere. I understand that people have full-time jobs and businesses and things that they have to do, but I just think for the sake of transparency and accountability that we should, we need to held, hold ourselves to that same standard. So those records would be here if anybody has any questions about it, they can call the office, and our City Council Administrative Assistant will be more than happy to provide those records to you. Again, I'm not trying to target anyone, but I'm just making sure that we're all holding one another accountable. And it's not, again, I think it's important. If I am tough on boards, that's great, and I hope people are tough on me. I'm tough on myself, I'm tough, because I think that the only way that we're going to get better in this community and making sure that we're adequately representing our community is if we're holding each other to a higher standard. So a rising tide lifts all ships, and I think it's important that we just all abide by the same rule. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak on the board and commissions? Next motion?
Next order introduced by Councilor Robinson, order that a Subcommittee on Conference be scheduled with the Planning and Development and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board to work on formulating a plan to deal with the city's housing concerns.
Okay, what's the motion of the council? Council Robinson, you have the, what's your motion?
Adopted unanimously under suspension.
Okay, adopted under suspension. You got the floor, you'd like to speak?
Yes, and I'll, I'll be brief. The reason I'm asking for this is that I think we, as a body, we need to become more proactive. And I say that, you know, if we're having foreclosures happen in our community, we should be able to approach the banks and see if we can have first right of refusal. We have, we have money now in the Affordable Trust Fund. We might want to think about the possibility of purchasing some of those units and being able to control what the rents might end up being in those units, to keep it affordable for the residents who are struggling to live here and stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other one like to speak on the motion? Okay, except and file.
Order introduced by Council Pearl Latanda and Councilor Garcia, request that the I S D give an update on the empty lot located at the corner of Bellingham and Willow Street.
First of all, of the council. Yes, sir. Okay, adopted under suspension. You got the floor, Councilor.
As being a previous council in District 5, I'm still in contact with some of the people in that area where you live on Codded Street. It seems like on the corner of Bellingham and Willow Street, there's that empty lot on the corner there, which just, I don't know, half a foundation, quarter of a foundation there. It's an eyesore. I've been living in Chelsea for roughly about 14 years, it's been like that since I've been here. Like the I S D to give us an update on that property. I mean, if the property's not being used and the developer's not going to do anything with it, I mean, should the city take it over and do something with it? I think something needs to be done about it because the residents are complaining about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else like to speak on the motion?
Order introduced by Councilor Garcia, request that the Traffic and Parking Commission consider changing the resident parking hours on the left side of Third Street to accommodate the parking needs of seniors who live across the street.
First of all, of the council.
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections.
No objections. Councilor Garcia, you'd like to speak on it?
No.
Under suspension.
Next order introduced by Councilor Robinson, where as it express purpose of municipal zoning to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea, and where as a specific objective of the city of Chelsea zoning garden states the need.
Last clerk, the waive the reading, we actually sent that to the Committee on Conference.
Okay, waive the reading, accepted, send it to the conference.
Okay.
Okay.
Next order introduced by Councilor Pearl Latanda, request that the City Manager have DPW look into putting two temporary rubber speed bumps on Clinton Street, one by Washburne Ave. and the other by Lisa Lane.
I'd like to adopt under suspension and speak on it.
You got the floor, adopted under suspension.
On Clinton Street, seems to be a cut through to the other streets in the area. It seems like when the summertime comes around like it is now.
Which one?
It seems like everybody comes out of the woodwork. We get racing bikes coming from the housing projects down the end, we get cars speeding by, there's kids that are from the project area that are walking up and down the street. I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt and injured. So I think putting temporary speed bumps on two locations on Clinton Street might help slow the cars down. We'll see if that works. If it works, maybe do a permanent solution afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is that you request the City Manager to look into the putting in there, okay?
Yeah.
Accept and file under adoption. Next one.
Next order introduced by all members of the City Council, where as the City Charter requires the, this is the resolution for the C I P, where as the City Charter requires the annual adoption.
I'm moving to waive the reading, and this is a C I P resolution by the Air Capital Improvement Program for the city. This, I'm moving it to.
Next scheduled meeting? The next scheduled meeting?
Yes. We had the public hearing this evening, and we have to pass this resolution before the capital improvement program is adopted. And there may be an amendment coming to the capital improvement program at the next meeting, so I'm moving to lay this on the table for now. Thank you.
That's all the, that's all the business you have, Mr. Chairman.
Before we adjourn, any announcements like to be made? The announcement, Councilor Bishop?
I have one announcement to make, Mr. Chairman. 10 Wesley Street, unlocated in District 1, it's also known as 360 Rev. Beach Parkway. It's a very large, kind of a large building, I'm not sure of the number of square feet, but it's been empty for a number of years, and two years ago was remodeled and was going to be an adult daycare center. That, for some reason, fell through. The people that were going to lease it backed out, so the owner is left with the building. The owner called me and asked, and told me that he was interested in redeveloping the property and that he wanted to do something very different with it, which would require a zoning change. And I said to him, step number one, we have to notify the residents and sit down with them and tell them what you're proposing. So we have scheduled a get-together at 10 Wesley Street, the location that's in question, for next Thursday evening, May 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I realize some of the district councils may not be interested in it, however, I know the at-large councils should be interested in it. So I'm hoping that you guys can attend. And the developers, Mr. Zamuto.
Yes.
Zamuto, he owns that property, and he's looking to redevelop it, so. May 10th, at the location, at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor.
I have a public announcement that might be important to all of us. They closed the ramp going up to the Tobin Bridge. So people that are going to use Congress have to go down there, find an alternative route because today was overcrowded and you couldn't get to it, so you had to find a different way to get there. So while that's closed, the people that live in our city should probably try to find a different way to go to the mullahs or go to the other way because it's very, very crowded at a certain time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coopero. There was signage to state that that will be out of order for four months, so hopefully your notice will let people know. Anyone else? Councilor President, well. Before we do that, I have a.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so like, I, I believe, it's not a moment of silence because nobody has passed away yet, but I just believe in the power of community and healing and power and prayer, and I want to make sure that we are keeping Felix Avolio Senior, Senior in our hearts. He's a dear friend and mentor, and he's very ill, fighting for his life right now, and I just, I'm hoping that we can just.
Director Avolio Senior.
Senior. Felix, former city council, former school committee member, our register of probate.
Correct.
Felix Avolio Senior.
Council Robinson. Silence.
Silence. In regards to Anthony Creswell, who passed away, and was actually buried today. Longtime Chelsea family, probably the first wave of Latinos that came to Chelsea back in the 60s. Anyone else have a moment of silence? Council Garcia?
It's actually, I'm going to be a little bit out of order because it's not a moment of silence, but I actually think it's very important, it wasn't mentioned here, that we commend the work that happened at 10 John Street.
Correct.
Last week. I think we did not mention that, but it is so important to thank all the firefighters and all the public safety officers that were on scene, not only from our department, but also from other communities that came to the rescue to help these families who unfortunately have lost their home. So there was 150 firefighters out there fighting in a very hot sunny day and in the worst conditions, so I think it's so important to commend the work that they did, but it's also so important to commend the residents that came out and went to the church, to the Iglesia de Luz, to provide supplies and, and support to these families that were affected by, by this catastrophic fire. So I think that's important, and thank you all and all the people that came out.
Just, if I may add to that, Capic actually stood up and took care of most of the families who were helping them and get put up in hotel rooms that they paid for, and also helped people with their first and last rent, those who had found, who found apartments at the time, and also Dan Cortez, who was at the site pretty much most of the night until they took care of all the families.
Counselor Bishop?
I'm saddened to hear that Edith Inzak passed away.
Oh, yeah.
She was a longtime employee of the city of Chelsea, was one of the original telephone operators when they had a switchboard downstairs in the building department. That was her job for a good number of years. Her husband Charlie was also, was passed away also, but was the plumbing inspector for the city of Chelsea, I think, until the day he passed, and I think he had 40 years of service in the city of Chelsea. But Edith and Charlie were very well-known in the city in its heyday, and I was very saddened to hear of Edith's passing. So he has a moment of silence.
Okay, before we say that, I also want to echo what Counselor Garcia said, truly want to really thank the firefighters in the surrounding communities that were out last week at John Street on Wednesday. As Counselor Garcia stated, I had all these notes down. It was 57 folks that was displaced, there was three firefighters that was injured, they are doing well, but again, they all lost everything in those three houses that was burnt, they were total. I know one of the occupants, residents there, she works at Metro Credit Union, I went down to help out this week. So the reason why I say that, I was reminded that they just didn't lose the house, they lost everything. They lost everything. All, all three of those houses, those 57 folks, I believe 27 of them was under the age of 18, I read that in the paper. But again, I want to thank the Fire Department of Chelsea, again, for running into fires when other folks are trying to get away from fires and try to put out the safety, and I want to thank them again for that. Also want to, also add the family of Courtney Henson for our first resolution this afternoon from Counsel Avre Genator, and our thoughts and prayers as we have a moment of silence, and also continue to keep our good friend Felix Arroyo Senior in your prayers. I spoke to his son last night, I know Counselor Damali was down at the vigil, down at the church, where there was a bunch of elected officials and folks, and so please keep him in your prayers. Thank you, the music.